The Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order now at 6:02 PM. And as always, we are going to start with the pledge of allegiance. And so if you guys could mute and rise, I will speak. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. There we go. So the first matter on the agenda is citizens' comments. And this evening, we do have one member of the public who would like to speak. And there she is there, it's Keely Noasaki. Go right ahead, Keely.
I'm muted, I'm muted now, you can hear me now, right? Okay. So I want to comment on Superintendent Downing's email from last week regarding masks. And I want to connect that to the superintendent community event we had at Center School last week. I am still in favor of children not wearing masks and parents to have the choice to have their kids, whether they wear masks in the school or not. And one thing that I picked up in the meeting last week is community, community, community. A lot of people said that they don't feel that the community is as connected before as it was before. And that the school and the school was what connected the community. I imagining a few years ago, because I'm new to town. So in saying that, our numbers for kids in our area, zero to 11 years of age is still under 1% of admissions into hospitals. And then that number actually climbs with the older children. And it looks like our town, our community rates of vaccination are pretty good. So I'm wondering, even though the Commissioner Riley has made this decision to push this to November 1st, when are we going to be able to make a decision? When is our town going to be able to make their own recommendations, independent of other recommendations? If our community is doing its job to support the overall benefit? Because if our children are protected at home and the community is vaccinated and protecting them in their their home life, then that should also protect them in the school because they're around other children who are also protected in their own homes. So I'm just bringing it back to that, that I would hope this would come back to the community. I know we rely on professionals above us, or I don't know how to refer, just higher positions. But when is it that we're going to be independent of that and focus directly on our own community so that we can better our system? That's my say. I just, I believe it still should be a choice for for parents and other families, whether or not their kids wear the mask so that we can help all these kids see each other. My son, I need him to learn to read because I'm sick of reading and I want, I want him to show me how he's progressing. I really feel like the mask has affected that. But that's my comment, thank you.
Thanks a bunch, Keely, appreciate it. And that's our only citizens' comment for this evening. So at this point, we will move on to our superintendent update and I'm going to toss it over to Superintendent Downing.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, School Committee for having me this evening. And tonight in the attendance report, I am speaking to you. I wanted to have an opportunity to speak to the COVID data dashboard that we've been crafting over the opening weeks. Continue to fine tune based upon questions that arise in our community in order to understand. And I pushed this out to the community last week. So I wanted to seize tonight's committee meeting as an opportunity to kind of go through that. And so as I mentioned in my email to the committee last week, and as I put into what we've been discussing conversations, is when we discussed this back in August, there was some discussion from several school committee members around offering the superintendent authority in determining when we would be able to pull back on restrictions, particularly masking. But at the time, we didn't have criteria around what that would look like. So there was some discomfort and just tried to make an arbitrary decision. Since that time, we've been able to develop, we've been given some criteria and we're able to look at that. So as we look at the benchmark of 80% vaccination rates within the school, 70% consent within the daily, the weekly COVID testing. And then the recommendations based upon the Neshoba Boards of Health, we can start to make these decisions building by building. And so what I'm coming for to you tonight is sort of notice that I would like to, at the next school committee meeting, put forward a recommendation to you all to recommend that the superintendent would have authority to pull back on the masking restrictions, school by school, based upon that criteria of 80% vaccination, 70% consent and endorsement of the Neshoba Boards of Health. So in that, what I wanted to demonstrate to you is how we're tracking those metrics. So Madam Chair, I think I'll share my screen here. We'll test my technology aptitudes. I think you should all be able to see that now. In the link that was sent to the community and I will be sending, the same link will appear in my weekly updates to the community back to this dashboard. And it'll even look a little bit different than what I referred to in my superintendent report and what I put out last week. Because we have some updated numbers in a couple of these metrics since that time. So it is dynamic in that way that as the numbers change, we make change and adaptations through the dashboard. So the first tab here at the bottom, and for the community's reference, you would select these tabs here at the bottom in order to look at different rates. And there are a couple of tabs that go beyond just the initial tabs you may see. So remember to scroll right, see all the pieces of information. But this is just a running record of the COVID cases of staff or students who are identified as a positive case of COVID-19. It does not get into contact tracing and those types of things. Or if a parent was positive, this is strictly a student or employee of the school system. So that's pretty straightforward to see. And I broke it apart by school and we go one week at a time. The second tab here, don't let this dizzy you, it's it's simpler than it may appear. But at the top, it is worthy of some explanation. At the top, you'll see I, just to help the cells be smaller, I put FB for fully vaccinated, PV for partially vaccinated. I have a community member reach out to me just over the weekend to say, it would be helpful to see what those percentages look like. So I was able to add those in. But it goes school by school. You can see the percentage of staff that are vaccinated, the percentage of students in the school. And obviously, center and MRE are at zero because they're pre-K through five, giving them ineligible for the vaccines at the moment. And then the percentages of fully vaccinated, partially vaccinated, and then the total percentage. So in this metric, you can see, for instance, at Neshoba High School, 90% of the faculty have at least one dose, 85.46 of the students. For a fully vaccinated combination of staff and students of 83%, partially vaccinated, 2.18%. For a total of 86% of the human beings that work or attend school at Neshoba High School have at least one vaccine, 83.81 are fully vaccinated. That data in this top set, and you can see as I scroll, the top set is fixed only because these, these data sets below are the data sets that are populating this table up above. So you'd be able to look at Center School, for instance, or Mary Rollinson, Hale, Luther Burbank, Florence Sawyer, and the high school. And scroll across the grades at each of those schools to see the vaccination rates. So for instance, if I am right here, I have the Florence Sawyer School. I know that 78.67 of the students have received at least one dose. Seventh grade, 89.86, and so on and so forth. So this page of the data dashboard is really going to help us understand what the vaccination rates are in our schools. The next tab, this data is, was refreshed as of today. As you can see, we have our first school that has crossed the 70% threshold. And that is Center School in Stowe. And these percentages have been growing each week as we're communicating the importance of participating in the COVID weekly testing program. So as we're looking at those things, we'll be able to understand and see these metrics as they come along. So the tools in place that as we go over the next couple of weeks, if we see those conditions improving and existing, we can begin to have that conversation. I did add one tab since I sent out my announcement to the community last week, and it's this tab. It's called attendance. And what I've done on the attendance tab is I highlighted in green this year. This is our average daily attendance for the school district and each of our schools so far this year. And our goal is, and when you look at school accountability reporting, they want you to have at least 95% average daily attendance across the course of the school year. So I pulled out the average daily attendance from the last five years to provide the community, to provide all of you, the context of how we're doing relative attendance to past years. And as you can see, our numbers are up from all the past years on average daily attendance. What I will caution you about that number is that September is a popular month for students to go to school. We're just returning, we're in the first month of school. So September tends to have better attendance than the other months. But we'll continue to keep this on the dashboard so that we can monitor how is the attendance in our schools relative to what the expectations? And expectations in state metrics are 95% daily attendance. So as you can see, we're in the 96, 97s, just at the high school, just a tick under 96. And then under that, I put the average weekly attendance, just so over time, we can identify or wonder if there's some trends that we're seeing. Then this next tab is the COVID cases by town. I've highlighted in yellow the weeks that we've been in school. So we can see that the aggregate of COVID cases across the three towns over time. And so I added this tab because the recommendation I openly will ask for, the third metric is critically important. That is supportive of our Neshoba Boards of Health in making the decisions at each of our schools. We need to rely on our public health experts to really tell us if it's safe to take that step based upon the metrics we already have. As I spoke to the Neshoba Boards of Health last week, they, for instance, just talked about, you know, when we have pockets or surges of community transmission, they have all that data in real time, whereas we don't. Which is why we would always lean to them in terms of directing us to understand the things that might not be obvious to the kids. Then the last tab here, this is just a tab of data sources where people can go to look up information, both from the Massachusetts COVID-19 vaccination page, pages to the CDC pages on death data, hospitalization, COVID tracker data. So it just gives you a sense of looking at how that information is gathered. So with that, I will shift my attention to discussing, Madam Chair, I think it'll be important if I just kind of cover, excuse me, the items I have in the report first, and then we can do questions, if that's okay. So in terms of the update on the COVID safety screens, we have been assigned and coordinated to begin our program. The coordinator, we received that notification this week. They're in negotiations to hire that coordinator. So we're optimistic we can get moving with our program next week. It's more likely to be the week after that. I will update the committee if any changes come. This has been a frustration point of ours. As you know, we signed up for this program in the third week of August. So the delays that have happened to the demand that school systems are using the program have definitely presented a challenge for us to get rolling. But I just want you to be aware of where we are at the time. The last two pieces to talk about is I was able to attend my first Assabent Valley Collaborative Meeting where we reviewed some of the budget numbers from last year and looked at our transportation numbers. And then I reviewed those with Ms. Maroni. And certainly, we were on point and our invoices have been received and processed. So that was all good news for me. As we bring more substantive information back from that collaborative, I will be bringing it front of the school. And then we did have our first community forum. I had my first entry plan community forum. I would like to thank Chair DeVito for attending that forum. We, we had about, I think it was 14 parents, 15 parents come. And we set up eight questions around a workshop format using an adaptive version of a protocol called Silent Chalk Talk. And then we had some discussions around it afterward. So I thought it was very valuable. I'd had some of the people that attended that forum already reach out to their friends and neighbors in the other towns, encouraging them to come to the forums. I will be doing round two next Wednesday at Luther Burbank Middle School in Lancaster. But I want to remind everybody that our friends from Bolton and Stowe are welcome to attend that meeting also. And with that, I would now like to turn it over to Dr. McGuire to give us an update from the Teaching and Learning Office.
Great, thank you, good evening, everyone. Lots going on in the world of teaching and learning. First of all, we've been doing a lot of work with multiple departments and working with staffs, staff as well as students throughout the district. We've begun participating in learning walks through multiple classrooms and multiple schools, examining teaching and learning practices and offering resources and coaching to our faculty and staff. You'll recall in the last few years, we've brought on a humanities lead as well as a math lead. Those positions are doing some great work in getting into classrooms. In addition, we're also excited to be piloting new resources in mathematics as well as social studies as it ties to the new curriculum frameworks in social studies, particularly around civic engagement, to align with these new standards and benchmarks as well as some reasoning methodology in mathematics. These pilots will inform our work moving forward on selecting curriculum and resources for the district moving forward. Another big topic, MCAS results were delivered to the district this past week. Those are individual MCAS results for each individual student. They will be sent home tomorrow consistently from all schools with a letter from the district and the building principal explaining how the test and results from this past spring's assessments have been different from the past. To support students, families, and schools, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education implemented a number of flexibilities, including some that were made available by the U.S. Department of Education as well as the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in acknowledgement of the challenges of the pandemic. As a result, this year's MCAS data will not count towards a district's accountability rating, but simply serve as a roadmap to accelerate student learning moving forward. Principals have reached out to their individual communities. And if parents have questions or concerns regarding the report or around their student progress, they can contact the individual teacher as well as the principal. So that correspondence will be going out from all of our buildings tomorrow. And then finally, we continue to find and try to offer new and innovative professional development opportunities for staff. We all know the past year and a half has been tough in terms of getting teachers out of the building to actual in-person professional development opportunities. However, the EdTech Teacher Innovation Conference, which highlights and offers multiple workshops on the latest innovative practices in K-12 education, will take place in person this November at Bentley University. So we're excited about that. And MasQ, which is a huge technological conference that's held every year at Gillette Stadium, will hold its fall conference this year virtually, but they're looking forward to getting back in person in fall of 2022. The MasQ conference is another opportunity for our teachers to engage in innovative practices, attend conferences, workshops. And our district has also presented some of our own innovative and engaging work with colleagues from around the region as well. And just in coming attractions, at the next school committee meeting, I will be reporting out on the work we're going to do around digital safety and offering a digital safety information night for parents in the community. And we're in the process of planning that currently as we speak. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much, guys, that's great. Does anybody have any questions for Kirk? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, to the superintendent, I just wanted to commend you on issuing such, such a wonderful dashboard. It's something that, you know, parents and faculty members and students can kind of dig into and really get a sense of what's happening. And so I very much appreciate that. What I do want to do is share something that was communicated to me by a handful of residents. Once your update was issued over email. And I think at this point, it may just be food for thought, or maybe it is something that you could consider. But the 80% vaccination rate, everyone seems on board, the Board of Health seems like it's fine. I think there's been some pushback about the 70% consent in testing. And one of the reasons why there's the concern there, and again, I'm just communicating what has been shared with me, is that there are individuals that feel like a false positive could really disrupt kids' lives. And so they're choosing, they're electing not to be a part of the program, which could limit our ability to achieve that 70% consent rate. And I realize that a couple of schools are either there or very close to 70%. But noticeably, the high school is well below that. And I'm just curious, what, do we have a contingency plan if that number reaches a certain percentage and plateaus well below 70%? Well, one of the things that you shared with us on the dashboard was the, I think the NRSD vaccination rate. So if you look at like, the high school is at 90%. Well, what if our threshold was 95% and we're just simply not going to get there? What do we do in that case?
Yeah, I understand your question, Mr. Rush. I think that's where the importance is. Because I've had that thought as well in terms of, what if we come up a situation where we are in a plateau situation? And, and I want to be clear, I'm presenting the data so people understand the data. That's all it is. And we're taking the recommendation of public health officials about how we look at the benchmarks, that data. So I think the important thing is going to be, is if we get to a point, say, let's say we plateau at 60% of the consent rate, even though we're at a 90% vaccination rate at the high school. I think this is where we're going to have to look at the data tracking that we're doing on the cases that we have. Because I think that's another metric that's important. And I think we would lean strongly toward Neshoba Boards of Health to guide us in making that decision. So if in that case, we were at a 90% vaccination rate, but we're at a 50 or 60% consent for weekly testing rate, if the Neshoba Boards of Health came to us and said, looking at what community spread looks in our community and around us, we think it would, it would be safe for you to do that, we would follow their recommendation at that time. That's why I think it's imperative that we have our metrics and tie them to the Neshoba Boards of Health recommendations as well.
Got it, great, thank you so much.
You bet.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions to the superintendent report? Seeing none. We can move on, thanks Kirk.
You bet.
And so everybody, we'll move on to new business here. The first thing that we would like to broach is a conversation around the composition and voting authority of our school building committee. You all may remember that at the beginning of the process, we took a vote that was 10 to 1, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Kalisonia? 10 to 1 in favor of making the voting membership people who lived in the district. So there is a new conversation that may need to be had about changing that composition a little bit. And Joe, if you don't mind, can I turn it over to you to perhaps explain, were you able to contact the MSBA and see if changing the composition was problematic?
You know, I knew you were going to ask me that, Madam Chair. And now you're going to make me, now the entire world is going to realize that as much as I was quick to respond to your email and say that I will jump right on this, like every attorney, I put it up and forgot to do it. So I do not have a response from Ms. Parrish at MSBA for this meeting. However, if you will allow me to speak to that, I can pretty much guarantee that if I were a bookmaker, I would certainly make book that Ms. Parrish's response is going to be what has been her consistent response to questions of this nature, which is, this is generally a local decision, as so evidenced by the fact that we, this committee was the one that voted to simply make, to grant voting authority on our committee to just residents of our district. So if you want me to continue at this point, I can go on and sort of elucidate what I was driving at in regards to this particular agenda item from our last meeting, so.
Well, I want to, I want to be fair to you, Joe, and make sure everybody in the world knows that I just asked you to check in with them. So that you haven't executed is totally fine. And, and as you guys can see, this is an I/O information only item. We're not going to vote on this tonight. We just wanted to put it on the table, let you guys know that the school building committee is actually going to take this matter up on the 19th to decide what their recommendation will be to the district committee. So on the 20th, at our next meeting, we will actually have an action item where we'll seek to act on the recommendation. And even if the school building committee were to say, we recommend
if the Shulva Boards of Health came to us and said, looking at what community spread looks in our community and around us, we think it would be safe for you to do that, we would follow their recommendation at that time. That's why I think it's imperative that we have our metrics and tie them to the Shulva Boards of Health recommendations as well.
Got it. Great. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions to the superintendent report? Seeing none. We can move on. Thanks, Kirk.
You bet.
And so, everybody, we'll move on to new business here. The first thing that we would like to broach is a conversation around the composition and voting authority of our school building committee. You all may remember that at the beginning of the process, we took a vote that was 10 to 1, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Gleason? Yeah? 10 to 1 in favor of making the voting membership people who lived in the district. So there is a new conversation that may need to be had about changing that composition a little bit. And Joe, if you don't mind, can I turn it over to you to perhaps explain, were you able to contact the MSBA and see if changing the composition was problematic?
You know, I knew you were going to ask me that, Madam Chair, and now you're going to make me, now the entire world is going to realize that as much as I was quick to respond to your email and say that I will jump right on this, like every attorney, I put it up and forgot to do it. So I do not have a response from Ms. Parrish at MSBA for this meeting. However, if you will allow me to speak to that, I can pretty much guarantee that if I were a bookmaker, I would certainly make book that Ms. Parrish's response is going to be what has been her consistent response to questions of this nature, which is, this is generally a local decision, as so evidenced by the fact that this committee was the one that voted to simply make, to grant voting authority on our committee to just residents of our district. So if you want me to continue at this point, I can go on and sort of elucidate what I was driving at in regards to this particular agenda item from our last meeting.
Well, I want to be fair to you, Joe, and make sure everybody in the world knows that I just asked you to check in with them. So the fact that you haven't executed is totally fine. And as you guys can see, this is an I/O information-only item. We're not going to vote on this tonight. We just wanted to put it on the table, let you guys know that the school building committee is actually going to take this matter up on the 19th to decide what their recommendation will be to the district committee. So that on the 20th, at our next meeting, we will actually have an action item where we'll seek to act on the recommendation. And even if the school building committee were to say, we recommend X, we could still do Y. But I just wanted to bring this up now so that you all would understand that this conversation is forthcoming. And back to you, Mr. Gleason, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. First and foremost, this item is on the agenda at my request. And I again want to apologize to my fellow committee members because I may have misspoke at the last meeting when I used the word "composition." I would suggest that the composition of our committee is fine. Actually, it was a little bit larger than what I initially had wanted back when we were just forming this committee. But I have to say that after about a year or so of this committee, I think the number is absolutely perfect. I think it works well, and we've had very good success with our composition. It's not so much the issue of composition, but the voting authority that I think, I would respectfully request that the committee give some additional thought to. And I'm approaching this very cautiously, because as Madam Chair has indicated, this vote was pretty overwhelming. It was 10 to 1. And in the interest of full disclosure, I was the one vote that voted in favor of granting voting authority to anyone on this committee, especially our district employees and administrators. So I approached this issue cautiously with the subcommittee, and I approached this issue cautiously with this committee, because frankly, if I was strongly in support of just limiting these votes, limiting the voting authority to residents, I might take some umbrage to the chair of that committee coming back in the face of a very clear directive from this committee to ask again on this particular issue. However, this request, and I made this very clear to the superintendent when he came on board, that I was at that time, and I still remain fully supportive of granting voting authority, especially to our district employees. The only additional person we have on our committee who is not a resident and not a district employee is our municipal officer. In this particular case, it's Town Administrator Orlando Pacheco. I warned the superintendent several months ago that I remain fully supportive of granting voting authority to our district employees for a number of reasons. One is that many of the district employees have been in a consistent presence at our meetings. Two, and the superintendent brought this to my attention as well, having voting authority vested in our district employees makes for an easier crafting of a quorum. We had one meeting in July. It was July. Yeah, I get it. We did not have a quorum. We had to cancel and reschedule for a few days later. But having our district employees available and somewhat, I don't want to say mandated, but strongly recommended to be at these meetings, it takes a little bit of the quorum issue away from us. The other issue I can say is this, relative to where we are with this committee and with this project, and I'm actually glad she's not here tonight, because the one individual who has brought us to this point and brought us to where we are with this particular project and has been on top of this project since day one is our Chief Procurement Officer, Ms. Maroni. Her service to this committee has been invaluable. And she is the one that she has worked tirelessly to get this project where we are. She took on the role of member of our OPM Subcommittee. Actually, was taking minutes as the recording secretary. I mean, she just layer upon layer of work that she's been doing in this. And at the end of the day, when it comes to decisions, Ms. Maroni has no say or has no vote in this particular matter. In addition to that, our new superintendent comes from a district where the voting authority was a little bit different and that there was some leeway granted to administration in that district to allow for voting authority to those individuals. So with that in mind, Madam Chair, I will just finish by saying that I will take, we'll take whatever recommendation from the building committee to the district committee. But I will never, I will not now, nor will I ever, move to vote, excuse me, move to change the voting authority on the building committee. I am hoping that vote, that motion might come from another member of this committee. I respect the will of this committee. The vote was 10 to 1. Above all this, no matter what I feel about this, I have to respect the authority of this committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. So because this is information-only, this is something that we're going to be addressing next time around. I don't think that anybody might have any questions, but I don't want to shut anybody down. So is there anything that's super pressing that you either just need clarification? Yeah, go ahead, Sharon.
Just, Joe, do you remember the, when that, when that date of the meeting that we voted on that?
October 26.
What was it?
It was October 26 of 2020.
Okay, thank you, because I'm trying to recall the context of the conversation. And I think if I can go back and look at my notes, that might help me remember the context. So thank you.
Great question. And you can also find the video too. If you want to watch it, watch yourself on camera, which is really awkward. Go ahead, Rich.
I was just curious to know if there's anything that precipitated this in particular? Like, I definitely see your point about Ms. Maroni. But is there something in the project that necessitates this at this point? Or is it really, you know, I just want to know why this is coming up now, other than a good suggestion from Mr. Downing about a quorum?
Joe, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I'll address it. As I said, Madam Chair, that I have never wavered in my opinion that the members of our administration who serve in this committee should be part of the voting block on that committee. And I made it very clear to the superintendent when he came on board that I feel this way, but I will never ask to present this in a form of a motion before this committee. But to answer Mr. Eccles' question, yeah, this request actually came from our superintendent. I think I will allow Superintendent Downing to speak for this, obviously, or that's up to you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. But I think Superintendent Downing and I are of one mind in this in that voting authority, I think that the district would benefit from, on a number of reasons, having our administrators part of the voting block of this committee.
Kirk, do you want to add anything to that before we move on?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would. Yes, and thank you, Mr. Gleason. I did bring that to your attention, a couple of things. And in speaking also with Marian Williams, our OPM, I had asked her the question of, had she experienced a building committee where the superintendent was not a voting member of the committee? And she indeed validated she had not had that experience. And there's a particular part of the project where we come to select the designer, and the committee has to appoint three people to that, of which it's dictated who they have to be. And one of those is the superintendent that participates of a three-person group that joins the MSBA and making the ultimate decision on our project designer, because it's the MSBA that ultimately makes the decision on the designer. When we are as whole going into that process, of course, we bring a strong voice to the MSBA in making that decision. So in having voting authority also on the committee, that further strengthens my foundation in pushing our project forward and other steps in the process.
Thank you.
I hope that helped. Yeah. Okay, guys, so again, the school building committee, your Subcommittee, is going to do some of the work on this for you, build out a recommendation. And on October 20th, I expect somebody will make a motion on this. So. Hi, Sean. Okay. So that is that at this time, and we can move on. Kirk, I think this is the point at which you need to go do some work.
I do. I have a meeting I need to get to. Excuse me this evening. And thank Dr. Maguire for staying here on my behalf. So thank you all, and I look forward to talking to you again very soon.
Thanks, Kirk. Appreciate it. Good luck. Okay, guys, so another information-only item ultimately is, I wanted to put this on the agenda early in the year just so that we can kind of recall our school committee protocols. It's not in the meeting materials, but it is on the school committee website. And I just threw the hyperlink into the chat, if that is easier for you guys. And maybe Alita can add this to the materials later. This is nothing that is new. This is something that the school committee has created over time, really to kind of govern our behavior, so to speak, or the way that we do business, to give us some kind of guardrails around what is, what are our general practices. So if you guys look at those school committee protocols, I wanted to let you know that these are largely based upon the MASC model, School Committee Operating Protocols. And if you look down the list of protocols, and actually, I am going to very quickly share my screen, if I am so capable. Hold on. So the school committee protocols, if you go down the list, there are actually quite a few of them, 14 total, which basically tracks the model protocols. And so I just wanted to remind the school committee that this is kind of the operational procedures of our, of our committee and kind of how we do business. And I wonder if this is something that you all would want to relook at, consider if these are still sufficient, if you think they are still appropriate. Is this something that you might want to have a future agenda item on? And the reason why I ask it, I will give you some context, is because I think that these protocols were built over time to kind of almost restrain the committee a little bit and create some triggers that would allow the leadership of the committee to kind of keep members in line, almost. And I'm not totally sure of the total history of the construction of these protocols, but if you compare this, the language of ours to the language of most school committees' protocols and to the model protocols, you can actually notice the difference in the way that the protocols are articulated. So I think that I emailed you guys at one point to ask you to look these over before the meeting. And I would just like to put it to the committee for a brief couple of moments here and ask you if there is any will to make this an agenda item or if you think that these are sufficient for now. I'm going to stop sharing so I can see you all. Does anybody want to weigh in here? Anybody have an opinion? Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And for those of the committee who have been, those of members of the committee who have been on this committee since 2019, you can start the eye-rolling now, because every time this comes up, I raise the same issue. And it's issue number two regarding the appearances before local bodies politic by members of this committee. So if you look at number two, protocol number two, it talks to the fact that when we appear before other body politics, we appear as individuals, not as representatives of the committee, without leave of this committee. So interestingly enough, yesterday I received an email from the Town Administrator in Lancaster who has requested the presence of myself and the superintendent before the Select Board on the 18th of October. I think they're looking for an update. They, the email said that they want an update on the school department. That's what he put in there, the school district, actually. And I'm sure they have some questions about the building committee. But I've always raised this as an issue here, because technically, under this protocol, as a member of this committee, I would need to seek leave of this body to appear as a representative of this committee before the Select Board in Lancaster. And I've never quite fully got my head around this, except for the notion that perhaps when the MASC was putting their model protocols together, they didn't really have regional schools in mind. So I've always had an issue with this, and I've always, you know, I've always been of the mind that if I'm at a meeting and a Select Board member or a member of the public asks me a question in my capacity as a representative, it serves to reason that I should be able to respond as a representative, rather than saying, well, I'm only speaking as an individual, because as a constituent, I would say, well, if you're only speaking as an individual and as a representative of the committee, what purpose do you serve? So number two has always sort of rankled me a little bit. I don't think it fits well with regional schools. I'm not saying that we should all be going out, doing our own thing on our own time, but I do think there needs to be a little loosening of the reins on that one, because technically, I've already committed to appearing before the Select Board, but by protocol, I need to seek leave of this committee. And I don't understand how I, as a Lancaster representative, appearing before my Select Board, should have to seek leave of my appearance from members of this committee who do not reside in my community. So that's always been my issue with that, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Joe. So that's a good example of, I think, some of what I was saying earlier on how our current protocols were built, I think, to create like taller guardrails than MASC thought necessary. And the one that you're referencing, Joe, actually doesn't really exist in the model protocols. So what else? Rich, was that your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what, or put a, build upon what Joe was saying, Mr. Gleason. I mean, we're elected officials by people in our district. And, you know, we need to be, have the freedom to work with other people in our towns, right? And, you know, it's incumbent on us to be in harmony with the rest of the committee. But, you know, to have everything go solely through the chair or however this works, to me, doesn't really seem to, seems antiquated. So.
Any other thoughts on this? Is this something that you would like to bring up at a later date? Go ahead, Amy.
I think that I would like the committee to vote to accept protocols, whatever they would be, because these are outdated. I think these were last approved in 2019. So if you're asking whether you think the committee should take this up as an agenda item, I'm in favor of that. But I agree with you that the way that our particular protocols have been crafted, they, I like the language of the MASC standard protocols better because they appear to be less objective, I mean, more objective than the ones that our committee is currently using. They seem to have a lot less judgment or something associated with them. And they treat each member, the protocols are for members together as opposed to what the chair will do versus what other members of the committee will do. That was my, I don't know if I'm saying it very eloquently, but so I don't want to get into each protocol, but I think my opinion would be, I'd like to see us take a look at almost adopting the MASC protocols for our committee.
All right, Mike?
I think there are some of these protocols that are simply updated, not as an opinion, but as a fact. Like number nine says, a quorum of five members is required. We're not at five members anymore. So I think, I think we need to take some of those things into consideration. However, the idea of playing protocol volleyball over Zoom seems like a monumental task. And frankly, it seems like something that would be far more appropriate at our workshop. And I know that we just had it, but that seems like the ideal place to revisit this. So maybe a concession would be to, you know, at some point, maybe adopt the MASC protocols as an interim protocol. And then, and then, you know, at next year's workshop, we sort of customize it and tailor it to our own needs.
All right, so these are a lot of great ideas. I'd like to recommend, we put this on a future agenda to perhaps let everybody think this through a little bit. And whatever motion somebody feels we should make, they can do that at this point. Oh, but I see Sharon's hand. Go ahead, Sharon.
So I'm, there's a little bit of history here. So I'm not disagreeing with anything anyone has said. I would be in favor of updating the protocols, and I agree with what Joe said and Rich said. But there is some history here that, going back a number of years now, but where there were committee members that were acting independently and making meetings. And I won't, I won't try to go into further details, but the reason that they are the way they are is as a response to some things that had happened. Some things that had happened. On the school committee in the past. Um, so when you speak about putting the rails higher, there is a history that. That caused that to happen, and I think we do just want to be aware of that. That we. We are all acting in the interests of. The community and the committee as a whole, and we're not acting as individuals. In making our own meetings and, you know, as. School committee members, I. I'll stop there.
Yeah, thanks, Sharon. Alright guys, so I am going to put this on the planning calendar for a future date in the not so distant future. So thank you for indulging me there. Uh, and we will move on to the next item here. Uh, which is the school committee goals. This is an action item. We have a few minutes scheduled here. Um. I'm not sure if you guys all have ready access to the school committee goals. Um. But. And actually, I don't, these, Alita, I don't think these were thrown into the minute into the meeting materials either, so maybe we should put this spreadsheet also in the meeting materials afterward. Um, and I can share my screen again with you guys just to pull this up.
Yes, someone just asked to give me the spreadsheet. I don't think I ever had it.
Excellent. Thanks, Lita. I will definitely do that. Um, after the meeting. So um, Mike, I have lost sight of everybody by and large by sharing my screen, so can you please? Let me know if people have their hands raised or yourself. So uh, these are the goals on this spreadsheet. You guys all have this spreadsheet, uh access to the spreadsheet shared with you, but. I'm sharing it here. Uh, each of our main subcommittees was tasked with building out the language of each goal, and so you can see here that. The policy subcommittee met. And this is the goal that they came up with. And I'm not going to read them all too. You guys can read. This was getting at um what we talked about at our workshop, making sure that. Our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion is reflected in our school committee policies. And so the policy subcommittee has dedicated, is dedicating itself to making sure that. Um, that is the case. Um, of course, they won't be able to see everything, but. Uh, the committee is very open to the community bringing forth policies that they believe need to be reviewed for D E I as well. Um, and we also have our Dear Jake Committee that is um. Still present and with us, who can also help in that regard. And you also have our personnel subcommittee uh constructed this goal. There it is. And this one is about the superintendent evaluation process. And you can see that um the P S C developed these key action steps and benchmarks. Which can actually be a bit of a model for the other um subcommittees as they go back to kind of round out. Some of the language in their goals and um I would ask that after we approve. The four um are eventually four main goals that the subcommittees do try to hammer out a few key action steps to add to this. And then we have our communication subcommittee here. And this is the goal that they. Um, came up with. Broadening and improving access to district-wide communication. Um. For all stakeholders. And then. Um, the budget subcommittee, I know that you guys are going to be meeting. Um, Steve, when when is your next meeting? I cannot remember now.
Our next meeting will be on the eighteenth.
Of October. Excellent. And I know that Steve was going to take this up with the budget and warrant subcommittee to bring forth. Um. Their budget goal as well. Which I think Steve was mentioning um or um. You know, in the process of building out these goals, there the school committee by law. Has certain purview over various things, and so all of these things need to stay within our purview. So we don't have broad overreaching power just because we set a goal. The goals are all within our purview. And so Steve will be careful to make sure that that's the case there. Do you guys have any comments? Um. With regard to the goals? And Mike, I can't see anyone, so.
I'm scrolling. Oh, it looks like Mary's got her hand up.
Yeah, hi, Mary.
Oh, hi. You can hear me right? Yes. So I would, I would just encourage the other subcommittees to really. Um, work um to flesh out their their goals as smart goals. Uh, because that is what we ask our superintendent to do. And that's how part of how we evaluate uh the superintendent's uh performance. In terms of smart goals that are that are specific, strategic, measurable, attainable. Um, rigorous and timed and tracked. And so sometimes it's um, it's even more difficult to come up with smart goals to really. Plan out how you will measure, how will we know that these goals have been achieved? Um. And so that's what I would encourage the other subcommittees to do um to really. Talk about this and see if you can make them smart goals and I also learned something new. I learned that there are smarty goals. S M A R T I E. And I think that everyone will appreciate uh what the I and the E stand for. The I is inclusion and the E is equity. And um certainly uh inclusion and equity um are lenses through which we want to. View everything that we do in terms of um students and their education um. And their welfare and although not all of our goals really uh, you know, sort of lean themselves into. Inclusion and equity, still thinking about smarty goals, which when I first heard it, it sounded a little. Little wise, you know, smarty goals, but once I heard what the I and the E stood for, I thought. Let's as much as possible look and see if there can be application to make smart goals into smarty goals.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, Mike, I can see you.
Um, yeah, thanks, Mary, for clarifying that and kind of bringing that to our attention, and I can assure you that my children have some smarty goals coming up on Halloween. My question is, um, going back to our workshop. When we did our workshop, we fleshed out some school committee goals and then we assigned a subcommittee. That would more than likely. Um. Begin to flesh out those goals in a more substantive way. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Okay, so. Does that? And forgive me if I'm um um sort of unaware, that's generally the case, but. Does that mean that our our subcommittee goals have to be based on what our? School committee goals uh have I? What our school committee goals were established back in the workshop?
Yeah, so um, just to be clear, the mass general law requires school committees to set goals for themselves. And the subcommittees do not need to have goals in and of themselves. So what we're trying to build here are four school committee goals. And we ask the subcommittees to work out the language and maybe some key action steps and benchmarks.
So they will be based on the school committee goals then?
Yes.
Got it.
And so the the me of like the the bones of what we have here in this spreadsheet is. In my opinion, and maybe not yours, but in my opinion, we have basically what we need. Um, but like Mary said, to make them smart goals or smarty goals. It's important to kind of identify, well, how will you know? What are the key action steps? What are you going to do to accomplish this goal? And what are your benchmarks? I mean, Mike, you know, you have to do this for your profession too, so. Um. All we need, um, I know that the budget and warrant committee is going to meet to hash out theirs. And um maybe over the next couple of weeks, as the subcommittees need again. You guys can add this to your new agendas to just hash some of these details out. And I'm going to stop sharing for one second. So I can see you all. Um, does anybody have any thoughts on this? Or any questions, rather? Okay, so. Um, would you like to, and I just am trying to poll the committee, would you like to put off voting on these goals until the spreadsheet is complete? Complete? A lot of thumbs up on that? Or some thumbs up, Sean, you think that's okay? What would you, do you want to wait to vote on all of it? Yeah. Neither here nor there. Joe, is that, what do you think? Wait to vote until it's complete? Alright, everybody, and that'll be a future agenda item. Thank you very much. So subcommittees. Um, as you guys meet and work this out, can you please keep adding to the spreadsheet? Um, and building it out so that when this is on the um agenda, it probably will be on the the first November agenda. Um, we can. Uh, vote on it. Alright, moving on. Um, our next matter of business here is the regional agreement update and estimated legal costs. So I'm going to start uh with a little bit of background information and then I'm going to toss it over to Mary. Um, so whenever a regional agreement needs to be tweaked or completely overhauled, the typical process is that. You create a regional agreement amendment committee. Or subcommittee. And um. We were wondering if that was necessary because we think that the changes we have to make to our regional agreement are so small. That we could have just done a very small um edit to the document. And we even reached out to legal counsel to see um kind of what that would cost us for them to just tweak a little bit of the language. Um, make sure that everything was still in line with mass general law, et cetera. Uh, so I want to let you know that our law firm got back to us very promptly after doing um kind of. Doing a cursory overview of what would be required. They let me know that it would cost about seven thousand dollars. To do the initial work of making sure that the agreement is um edited to the appropriate level. And includes, you know, everything that it needs to include. You guys know that that regional agreement, once edited, needs to go to town meeting in all three towns to be approved. And to have things on the warrant, um, they have to be submitted by March. So any uh thoughts on seven thousand dollars? I'll weigh in. I think it's it's a lot. I think it feels like a lot of money. Um, and I don't know that that's money well spent. Uh, the original estimate was around fifteen thousand dollars, but keep in mind that this estimate of seven thousand dollars. Does not include. Working with the amendment subcommittee on the back end and doing all the town meeting work. And so it is possible that the lawyer cost could eventually climb to fifteen thousand dollars when all of the process is wrapped in and charged. Um, and so because a lot of that front end work is tedious work that uh the lawyer would have to do. It can, it's expensive on the front end. So Mike, what did you want to say?
Uh, well. You know, just like any proposal, I mean, do we have? Um. A list of services that will be rendered, or is this just a pie in the sky number? I mean, I know fifteen is more than seven, seven's less than fifteen. But um, it seems like just a big. Number that's just been thrown out there without any um. Plenty of specifics.
Yeah, Peter, definitely. Uh, Peter Mello, our attorney, did definitely give me. Um. You know, kind of um a punch list of all the things that he thought would have to be done. And I think that I think that it basically equated to about thirty hours of time. Um, to manage it. And so in lieu of that. Um, and in talking with my personnel subcommittee co. Uh, Mary, I'm going to actually turn it over to you and Mary is would like to offer an alternative solution, which kind of. Moved into our next item on the agenda, and that is reversing the order of how we do this. And having the re- our regional. Agreement amendment subcommittee formed, have that subcommittee do the work that is um. You know, on the front end and then bring our attorney in on the back end, which is gonna be necessary no matter what. Uh, thereby reducing the cost quite a bit. So Mary, why don't you fill in the gaps here for me?
Okay, I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Gleason for continually continuing to shine a spotlight. Um, and to urge uh to have some urgency about completing the amendments um to the regional. Committee. And to say that um I considered that my response was pretty defensive, but. Basically, I agree with Mr. Gleason and and the level of frustration that I have felt. Um, was part of my thinking. Either the policy subcommittee or consultants could do this, or perhaps the lawyer, but I have another. An another offer um that I'd like to make following our last committee um meeting. And uh I I did call Christine Lynch at the Department of um Elementary and Secondary Education. And um Christine has has always, she is, you know, a financial wizard in Desi. And she has always been extremely responsive, and so we we talked about things. Basically. I reminded her a a lot about um our regional agreement and the recommendations that she had made. And um, and I also tried to get her to give me an idea of. Um, what would be appropriate, you know, what's a scale for paying a consultant for um a lawyer? And she was um wonderfully diplomatic and completely neutral and said that some. Um, some school committees do hire consultants, um some, you know, retain lawyers and some don't. And that's all that she said. But as we talked about it, she said, I hear that what you really do want to do and what I will uh. Urge you to do is bring the public, bring the town and um the public into this as much as possible. And um, but I also forgot to tell you the first part. She said that our district agreement is completely legal. It is um, you know, with with Desi and in fact, any regional agreement. No matter what is in a regional agreement, if there are M G L laws, if there are Desi regulations. Um, then those have precedence over anything that is in a regional agreement. So let's say. And there is some things that we need to be uh more specific in terms of like chapter seventy money and and some of the financial part. So even if we have something that is outdated in our agreement, though Massachusetts general law and Desi regulations. They stand and they take precedence. So it's not, uh, obviously, we are encouraged. To bring um our regional agreement, which really hasn't been um, you know, formally amended with um Desi. Approval since uh nineteen ninety-four, get going with this, but we're not in any jeopardy. Our regional agreement is completely legal and it is, it it's in good standing and we are in good standing. Now, one, I also spoke to um a attorney Mellow. And and it occurred to me as I went back through my file, and if I showed you the file I have and the the amount of research I did. That he just asked for some background information. And as I went through the background information, it reminded me of when I went through all of this with the consultants. And the more I talked about it and the more information I gave, I thought, wait a second. I know more about this and um then either the consultants, they wouldn't know, there's a, there's a certain um historic. Aspect to any regional agreement because no town is a is a duplicate of an another town and regional agreements. Are are formed and each is unique and reflects the communities. And so the more I thought about it, the more I thought. Wait a second, we, let's not spend fifteen thousand dollars. Let's not even spend seven thousand dollars. Because as I looked over the work and I mapped it out. I saw that we could form um a regional agreement amendment subcommittee. And um and do a lot of and do this work. Um, and we have Desi, we have Christine Lynch to help us if we run into difficulties. But what I also found is I started to really look at this, and I do thank you, Mr. Gleason, for getting me going on this. That quite a few of our protocols and um and our our policies that we have. And it's great that we undertook the policy renewal review that we did with M A S C. So that we're real, our policies are are up to date. There are many of our policies that can just be plugged right in to some of the places on uh that we have comments from Desi. So let me just explain to you what I would like to propose. This committee, most, most of you were on the committee at the time, if we have a few new members, point. Appointed me as the the point person on this, and I would like to. appointed me as the, the point person on this. And I would like to continue in that capacity if that's the will of the committee. Um, I think that we should form a subcommittee that would have volunteers from school committee, two other members, um, that would have volunteers, um, from the towns, each town. And, um, going through the town administrators, that those from the town would either be a member of the select board or the finance slash advisory board. And so we could go through, so we'd have three from school committee, three from town, elected officials, um, not town administrators, we're talking about somebody who is either on the select board or, or finance. And then three community members and one of the, um, one of the thoughts on this was that it would be, um, it would be people who are already, um, committed in, in the sense of serving in some way, and I thought of school councils. So this is a long, um, kind of prelude to, I'd like to make a motion, uh, which is really the way that we should do things anyway. First, it should be a motion. And then the person who makes the motion would, would have a chance to talk to it. But I wanted to give you a sense of what I'm talking about and what I, I am offering. Um, I feel, um, newly committed to the process. And I'll just say one more thing before I read the, um, the, the motion that I'd like to make. What happens after the regional agreement amendment subcommittee works is that, um, I, there would also be a, a point where the committee, after let's say four to five meetings, would have a document ready to be available to everybody in the town so that we could get comments and, um, and remarks. And then it would go back to the regional, um, agreement amendment subcommittee for like finalization. But then, whatever this, this subcommittee does comes to us as school committee and we would make the decision to vote for this. However, then, it has to go back to DUCY for their approval before it can go to the towns to be put on the warrant to finally be, um, voted at the town meetings. And then the certified votes from the town meeting need to go back to DUCY for the commissioner's signature. And, you know, as I look through what I have, I have the checklist of everything that is needed. I have, um, Mars, um, presentations. I have a lot of information that I could bring to this subcommittee. And I really believe that we could do it and have this in, have, uh, a regional agreement that would be understood, that would clearly reflect our, 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 our region and, um, and that could be ready for our townspeople, having had input to vote on. So, here's the motion. I move that the Chobah Regional School Committee vote to create a regional agreement amendment subcommittee composed of nine members, three volunteers from the school committee, three volunteers, one from each town, from the select board or finance committee, and three volunteers, one from each town, currently serving on a school council and a resident of the respective town with priority given to parents serving on school councils.
Have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Uh, let's open this up for anybody who wants to comment or question, uh, ask a clarifying question. Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I, 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 I definitely wanna chime in on this, but I, 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 and probably it's, it's a mood issue at this point. I, I did wanna defer to other members if they have questions first, because I've been flopping my gums a lot this meeting. So if anybody has any questions, I would simply defer to them. But if nobody has any questions, speak now, whoever holds your piece, okay, then I'll, I'll comment then. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank Dr. McCarthy for her kind words. Uh, I am much appreciative of the work that she has done and continues to do on this. I didn't have one, actually, one question and one comment about what Dr. McCarthy, about Dr. McCarthy's motion and what she had said in the prelude to that motion. So the Mc- and, and perhaps it's a misunderstanding on my part, my, um, my understanding, and it may be wrong, was that the regional school amendment committee would be an independent committee or be independent of the school committee. The way this motion is crafted, I believe we're creating, we are creating or we're proposing a subcommittee. And I, I just, the mechanics of it are, I'm a little bit fuzzy on. So I agreed with everything that you're suggesting. I think it's a great idea that we put this in the hands of members of this committee along with some outside volunteers and that they hammer out some type of, uh, remediation of our agreement. But you had said that that, once the subcommittee makes its recommendation, it then comes back to us for approval. And I'm wondering if that's, it, I, I'm not sure if, it, the, if, if this committee voted not to approve what the recommend, what the recommendation of the sub, of the, of the regional school agreement committee, if, if we don't approve that, is that, I'm not sure if that has any enforceability. Is that just a recommended vote? Is that just our position leading into town meeting? That with regards to this, the, uh, the regional school subcommittee would, I keep saying subcommittee, the regional school agreement committee would be presenting the, the new agreement for, uh, passage at town meeting. And perhaps at those meetings, it would say, well, the school committee recommends or does not recommend passage. I, I'm not, I'm not certain that, that this committee, under the terms of our current agreement, has authority to, to essentially roadblock any type of work that the regional school amendment committee would be doing. So I wonder if Dr. McCarthy could give me clarification on that.
Okay, so from what I understand, this decision does rest with the school committee in terms of an amendment for, um, the regional agreement. And whereas regional agreement amendment committees, when they are formed, um, usually they're, you know, they're, um, and I think I said this before, that oftentimes there is, um, a dis- one of the towns, uh, wants to leave or someone else wants to come in. So that's usually when, that, when you would have, um, a full committee. This is, um, this is our province, this is our decision. And I would say to you, Mr. Gleason, that should the committee look at the agreement, um, and the recommendations that DUCY has made to us that the regional agreement subcommittee, uh, amendment subcommittee would make, um, there, there was a vote down. Well, I would think that that would mean that, um, the work would go back to the subcommittee to work on whatever it was that the school committee, um, was not in agreement with. Um, and then to bring it back to the school committee because it's a school committee vote. As far as, as I can see, that that's, that's what's been said to me, um, that this is, and that's why people do, um, subcommittees. And Mr. Gleason, there are times when a school committee itself will just take up the amendment, um, do some, you know, canvassing of town and citizenry, but that the, the decision rests with the school committee. So that's, that's why I'm saying that I think we, there's plenty of process here, um, for, um, the town and as well as for citizens. And then to have everyone be able to see that whatever the document is, and this is before it goes to school committee. So the whole citizenry, the three towns would be able to look at it, make comments, goes back to the subcommittee and then comes to the full committee. This should be pretty, pretty perfect at, at that, at that point. Um, with going back and forth with Christine Lynch in terms of any questions we have, I feel very confident, um, that with her expertise, um, I guess one of the things I didn't say too is that there are, while there isn't a model example of, um, making amendments, there are a number of regional agreements that can be used and we would use them in the subcommittee as, um, as, as things to, to read, to look at and perhaps to get ideas from. Um, and so there, there's quite a bit of information that is available. Anyway, I don't know, Mr. Gleason, does that answer your question? That it, it's ours. It is, the decision is ours. However, where, where the town comes in, the three towns, is that the citizenry will vote on this. And that's why we wanna make sure that we have representation from the towns, representation from citizenry, and then we all, we also push it out to everybody to be able to, um, speak to this and to do as wide dissemination as we possibly can. And this, um, this, the clarity that we can bring to this will benefit, um, not only, you know, us, uh, you know, on school committee, but the towns as well and, and as well as the, the whole district. It's a, it's, um, a regional school, you know, district, um, um, commi- you know, agreement. So.
Yeah, um, thanks, Mary. Just to, to add on to what you were saying, um, in our research, Joe, the, the, um, what we've seen is that regional agreement amendment committees are an entity of the school committee and that they do have to have the membership that Mary identified.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I, oh, well, Mr. Horace has one thing to say. I don't wanna take up the time.
No, no, go, by all means, Joe.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Horace, and thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I think it really just comes down on my end. And again, I'm just one opinion of one eleventh of this committee. I'm just looking at the, um, the language of section seven of the regional school agreement, which speaks to amendments. And by my reading of this, that, you know, we are, the committee itself is authorized under the agreement to make recommendations to change, but there's also a provision that allows, you know, uh, an initiative petition of ten percent of the registered voters in the town to, uh, make changes to our agreement. So I, I'm not, this is not something that was exclusively within our domain. But what I was kind of leading up to in regards to, uh, my question to Dr. McCarthy was that, um, and I, I did broach this issue with Dr. McCarthy last fall, that there has been some pushback in my community to change section eight of this agreement, which is the date that, uh, we are mandated to present our budget to our local sending communities. And I'm not certain that that's something that we as a committee want to change, but once we set up this committee, uh, if that committee should actually be formed, and I'm probably sure it will be tonight, that I think it's gonna be in for a penny and for a pound. And once, and I think the members of this committee should be forewarned that, you know, at least one community is looking to move that March fifteenth date up. So, uh, get ready for a fight, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, my, my point was just, um, to just amend the language, actually. The last section of it says, uh, select board or finance committee and three volunteers, one from each town currently serving on a school council and a resident of the respective town with priority given to parents serving on school councils, which to me, I think can be kind of cleaned up a little bit, um, with just three volunteers, one from each town with priority given to parents serving on school councils, which to me seems far cleaner, but what do I know?
Mary, do you, um?
I would accept that, uh, sure, that, we could.
Without objection?
Yeah. No, without, the, the, I think that that does clean it up.
And Rich, you seconded the motion. Are you okay with Mike's suggestion?
But of course.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Amy?
Yeah, I, this kind of gets to my line of questioning, which is the, I guess I don't have a good handle on how these committees, um, the membership of these committees. And like Joe said, I think once this committee is formed, it is going to open up other areas of debate. And I, I just wanna make sure we're taking enough time to think about the composition of the committee. So I'm in total favor of, um, creating this subcommittee. Um, and I think it sounds like a fair way of doing it. I just don't know. I, I would appreciate some more time to look into how other regional agreement subcommittees have been formed, just before I vote on the composition of it. So I, I don't know if other members feel like that, um, because one, one, um, one piece of this that seems to be missing from the representation is unless I'm misunderstood as community members at large, um, you know, people who are not parents, but may have an opinion about a regional agreement. Um, so I, I don't know if it makes sense to make, and to amend the motion to just form the committee tonight and then take it back up at the next meeting to vote on the composition of it. But if other people feel comfortable with the composition, then that's, I guess that's okay with me.
And I would, um, argue that it's not to say that the composition can't be altered in the future as we elucidated earlier in the meeting on another subcommittee and its, um, voting authority. So any other comments or questions? Yeah, Steve?
Yes, I, I believe that, uh, in the original motion, it's three community members, but with three community members, but with preference being given to members of the school councils. It, is it, i- is my correct in that, Mary?
Well, actually, it, it does say, um, that they would be serving on a school council. And if I could just speak to that for a second, I do wanna finish with your, your question, Steve.
No, that's, that's my only question.
Can, Mary, Mary, before you go ahead, Mike, can you just illuminate one more time the amendment that you offered up?
Yes, do you want me to just read the whole, the whole motion?
Sure.
The amended motion, okay. So, uh, the motion is I move that the initial regional school committee vote to create a regional agreement amendment subcommittee composed of nine members, three volunteers from the school committee, three volunteers, one from each town from the select board or finance committee, and three volunteers, one from each town with priority given to parents serving on school councils.
Thank you. Um, go ahead, Mary. It, to kind of illuminate why, why that last piece isn't there about the prioritizing school council members.
Hmm, one of the, one of the points is, um, that, that people, especially parents, but also, um, teachers and community members on school councils are already representing certain constituencies. And so, uh, as well as being, um, committed members who also could very well ha- be, um, have some, you know, the relevance of a regional agreement has, you know, might have something more to do with the work they do. Now, now that I see how this is written, if we, if we do this for everyone and anyone, um, then it gets into what we did, uh, when we think about what we, when we were trying to find people to serve on, um, the screening committee for the superintendent of schools and trying so desperately to make sure that everything was fair and having, um, you know, having lotteries and having applications. Um, it seems to me that i- as long as we have school committee, town, and we have some representation from the citizenry with the fact that the whole document will be, and it's, is, I think it was Mr. Gleason who talked about, this is not a long, prolonged document, and I don't believe it's gonna get too much longer. It might because we'll be putting in some policies, but it's gonna be as succinct as possible. And people, citizenry are gonna have a chance to bring in their comments. I think, it, Amy, to your question, there's not a lot of, um, information that's available. Uh, you know, I've done a lot of research on other regional, uh, uh, agreements. Um, and oftentimes, um, they, they wouldn't go through the kind of parity that we're talking about. There's no dictate that it has to be, you know, school committee. I mean, it could, it could be anything really that we want it to be and it's been different things in, in, in different places. Um, so as long as we have some, to tell the truth, I, I really think that expediency here not to cut anybody out. I mean, I, I would love to think that there'd be so many people that would want to work on this, that we would, you know, they'd be just banging down the doors and how would we decide? I mean, one of the questions I thought you might ask would be, um, h- how, how will we, you know, obviously, we would go through the, um, town administrators for the town representatives. And they could, they could work that out. So we'd get three there. But at the reason I, I was, I was limiting this and thinking that we should to school councils is that, so we would communicate with them through the principals as long as that is all right with Superintendent Downing, and I think that it would, would be. Um, no, no pressure on the, on the principals, ju- but just that they would disperse the information. And then I was thinking, dear school committee, that first come, first served, the first people, and I would have a detailed explanation of what the time commitment would be, what the meetings would be, um, how long that they, they would be, and that there would be some homework in between meetings. Um, and I think that that will either, um, And that there would be some homework in between meetings, um, and I think that that will either um, entice some people. Or or deter some people, but if we, if we want to be able to do this and all the steps that I outlined. Um, by, by the 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 um, town meetings in May. Then we really need to get started. And um, so I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly open to other ways of of bringing in the people. Other than I'm, I'm just going to tell, uh, I don't even know how I exactly I would let everybody know. Um, that this, and then, and then say the first, first people who respond and are in the category would be in on it. Anyway, I would, I would be happy to have some suggestions on that. I'm not trying in any way to curtail. Um, or to limit, um, except what what is reasonable, and I think that this is reasonable. I also think that, that um, and I know that school councils are um, are very close to. A lot of people who are on school councils eventually decide like maybe they would be on school committee, and so these are, these are very committed people. And there are community members on school councils. Um, I was a community member on school council, and if this came to me. And uh, I I would, I would hope that I might be one of the people who would be interested. So.
Mary.
Madam Chairman, I I have to rise to a point of order at this time, and I apologize for this. Uh, it may end up being more of a point of clarification, but right now it is actually a point of order. So what was on the floor was a motion made by Dr. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Echol, and then discussion ensued. However. I just heard Mr. Horish make a motion where he used the pronoun I, I move. So there was a motion put forth that was not seconded, um, was just as a point of order and a point of clarification. Was Mr. Horish simply reiterating Dr. McCarthy's motion, or is this a different motion that has yet to be seconded? And maybe further up the discussion. Thank you.
I think you, yeah, you're welcome. He was channeling Mary. He was role playing.
Yep.
And so it was just a reiteration of the amended version of Mary's motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mary.
However, um, I would like to say that the way, you know, you cut out um, some other words. I was proposing that the volunteers, one from each town currently serving on a school council. With priority given to parents serving on school councils, which would mean. That there are other people serving on school councils, community members and teachers. Now, I thought about this, and if it, if it were a teacher who is a member of the town, that person is a citizen. And would have a right to, um, so.
Would you see, would you like to um, further amend the motion to eliminate parents? And just say members of school council?
I think that that, that would, you know, one from each town with priority given, but see, how do we let other people know? So this, with priority given to members serving on school councils, so that means it can be somebody else too. But how can we be fair that other people would hear about this? Do, I hope the people understand what I'm talking about. I, it's not that I'm trying to curtail. It's true, it's that I'm looking for equity in terms of communication about this, that people, if they wanted to, would be able to apply. And then who's going to decide? See, I don't want to be in the position of saying, oh, yes, oh, no. That's not what this is about.
Let me, let me say, don't worry about that right now. I think that you can pick names out of a hat. There are ways that we can do it kind of diplomatically. I think I need to go back just as a point of order to Mr. Horish. Mr. Horish, are you okay with eliminating? And kind of amending your amendment to eliminate the word parents, giving preference to members of the school council?
Yes.
Yes, and Rich, again, are you okay with this further change of the motion?
But of course.
Okay, so any other discussion on this amended amended motion?
Madam Chairman, if there's no further discussion, could the motion simply be reread so we know exactly what we're voting on? Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's do, um, uh, Mary, do you think you can do another read of it?
I could try. So I being I, move that the uh, Nesho Regional School Count, School Committee. Vote to create a regional agreement amendment Subcommittee composed of nine members, three volunteers from the school committee, three volunteers. One from each town from the Select Board of Finance Committee, and three volunteers, one from each town. With priority given to members serving on school councils.
Second.
Thanks for redoing that, Rich. Uh, anybody else have any questions or concerns, comments, informing the Subcommittee?
Uh, Joe owes me a beer. That's it.
Any other relevant questions or comments? Okay, guys, um, so at this point, I am going to take the vote. So all those in favor of the motion Mary just read and Rich seconded, uh, Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Pock?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
The vote is seemingly unanimous. It is unanimous. Thanks so much, and um, just before you talk, Mary, I need to say this. The amount of time that you've already put into this and the amount that you've just pledged to continue putting into this. Is incredibly generous, and we are all very grateful. Um, what were you going to say?
I was going to say, thanks, Leah, and I was also going to say that if it's the, if it's the will of the committee, I would like to be appointed chair. Um, of of this committee, but I would like that to come from the whole committee.
I'll move to nominate Dr. McCarthy as Chair of the Regional Agreement Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. I think I heard you second that. Any um, any discussion on that? I'll take the roll again, Dr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Thank you. I will say yes, Ms. Pock?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Absolutely, yes.
This is Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Without doubt, yes.
Again, unanimous. Thank you so much, Mary, for taking that on. Um, as is usually the case, uh, the chair can appoint school committee members. And so we are going to need a member from Stone, a member from Lancaster to volunteer for this committee. So if you could, please submit that to me ASAP, and um. I think that we should perhaps, I don't know if you guys want to open conversation right now on like methods for getting the word out otherwise. I know, Mary, you said that you were going to put it out to the town administrators to identify three people, one from each town. From those elected boards with regard to a resident from each town. With preference given to school council members. Do you need any guidance here around how to get the word out?
I could probably use that. I mean, I think about, um, yeah, I I could use that maybe from from Alita.
So I feel like, um, then, uh, we've talked about this so many times. Um, I know, Amy, you have kind of. And the communication, as the Communication Subcommittee Chair, you have methods for getting messages out equitably. Might you have a recommendation for how Mary could do that?
Uh, yeah, we developed a distribution list. Um, for the building committee that I could share with you offline and could walk you through how I've been doing that. For the building.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, thanks so much, guys. So again, if you're interested as a Lancaster or Stowe representative in joining Mary. Please let me know ASAP. We would really appreciate that. Great. Thanks again, Mary. Excellent job. So um, our next item here is a reconsideration of the to- the start time of school committee meetings. And um, I think that Mary might have a motion on this as well.
I do, and and I apologize for talking so much, but this is just the way it 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 falls right now. So I listened to all of us talking last time, and uh, we didn't. Put a motion on on the floor, but I I listened to what people said, and um, and I do have a motion. Um, but first of all, so I'm, I'm going to talk, I again, I'm doing the same thing I did before. All right, I'll go, I'll do it the right way this time. I will put the motion, all right, oh, Mr. Gleason smiled. I'm going to put the motion up, and then I'm going to talk because I get to talk first afterwards. I move that regular, the Shova Regional School District School Committee meetings begin at six thirty PM. And that whenever possible, executive sessions and professional development be scheduled from six to six thirty PM. So that's, it's not six o'clock. It's not seven o'clock. I mean, it's six thirty. And here's some of the data.
Mary, do you mind if I ask?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thanks, Rich. Okay, so um, our motioner may speak first. Go ahead, Mary.
All right, thank you. Um, the uh, I I look back at regular school committee meetings. And um, of this school committee. So on June second, and this is from the minutes. From uh, we, we met for an hour and five minutes and then went into executive session. On September second, we met from six to seven fifty-one, an hour and fifty-one minutes, and then executive session. And nine twenty-two, six to eight fifty, two hours and fifteen minutes. So. Um, what that averages is one hour and forty-five minutes per meeting. However. Let's say we just take the two September meetings, um, the average is two hours and three minutes. Now, currently with a six o'clock start, we have built in three hours. Um, beginning at six o'clock with a vote at nine o'clock that we often don't take, but we, we really should. Um, and so it looks as though from our past, our recent practice, that we could. Um, we could change to two point five hours before a nine o'clock vote and be able to move through the regular agenda. Many school committees have executive session prior to the regular meeting. Um, and and I would also say that um, that e- even professional development. Half an hour isn't a lot of time, but you know, for the most part, we're not engaging in professional development that is. Um, you know, strategically, really planned to be able to engage us an awful lot. There's usually information. I would also say that in executive sessions, that having half an hour would force. Uh, professional development to be very concise and targeted, would force um, legal representation. To be extremely um, targeted and as concise as possible. Um, the the good part of this is executive session coming beforehand when we're fresh. Even if we had um, questions, and maybe we would have to schedule it after nine o'clock for the other, the other part. Um, at this present time, I I think that this would make a lot of sense. And we wouldn't have, every meeting wouldn't begin at six o'clock, but we would be fresher than we are when we've gone. For a whole night and then have executive session. So I, I just, I offer this. I don't have a lot of vested interest in this. I was listening to the committee and thinking about, think about the work. The people on this committee are are doing, thinking about the building um, committee and the other subcommittees. And um, and I really did listen about ending at a reasonable hour. And uh, for so many, you know, for for people's real lives. So that's why I'm bringing it. Uh, I realized for um, Alita, with me going through the calendars and changing where it says six o'clock to six thirty. Um, but I open it up for people to talk about and think about it, because every single time wouldn't begin at six o'clock. But people would know when the, when there um, was something from, uh, and maybe it's even five thirty to six thirty. So it's earlier for professional development or whatever we're doing, but people could plan ahead for that. But being able, I mean, we watch people eat during meetings. Now, you can't do that for the, well, you can kind of, but you can't have cute little kids coming in and bringing you food during the meetings. When we're meeting in person, which we all hope will happen at some time soon, um, or sometime in the future. So. Just, it it makes sense, and so I'm bringing it forward for your discussion.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody want to add to that? Before we take the vote? Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, at the risk of being labeled the Monday morning quarterback. Um, had Dr. McCarthy not suggested that we start the executive session at six, I was actually going to ask that we do that. That's, Dr. McCarthy is absolutely correct. Not just school committees, but a lot of select boards and other body politic masses. Always have their executive session uh, prior to the commencement of the meeting. Uh, I think the one point that members should probably know is, is that even though we're starting our executive session, we would be starting our executive at six o'clock. We are not compelled to terminate it at six thirty. So if we needed to go to six forty-five or what have you. The issue is, we can't start our meeting before our posted time, but we certainly can start our meeting after the posted time, and I I know that for a fact. But I waited time and time again for the Android Select Board to get out of executive session and start their meetings for so many years. But that being said, uh, I did have one question for the chair, and since it's a little bit off center of this particular topic, but. In in looking to sort of economize the time that we spend at these meetings, I I did have one question. Um, prior to the modification of our agenda by your former chair, we used to do our consent agenda at the end of the meeting. Then your former chair moved the consent agenda to the beginning of the meeting. I now notice we're sort of back, sort of in the middle of the meeting. And I was wondering, given the sort of perfunctory and ministerial task attendant to the consent agenda. Is there any particular reason that you place that agenda item where it is? Because I think that it goes to serve that, you know, get that. Very ministerial task out of the way for earlier, so we don't have to worry about it at the back end. But I was just curious as to the chair's reasoning for moving sort of that consent agenda back through, further down the agenda.
So there's no reason why it's there that I can think of, other than we wanted to make sure that the front end of the meeting was um. For Kirk, so that he could uh, leave. But I think, I don't know, Alita, do you have any opinion on why the consent agenda landed where it is?
I think we just kept it there because when we do have guests come, like principals and stuff like that, we like to have them first off. So that they can go on with their night, and then we do our regular business after that.
Yeah, I think that's right. Does that suffice, Joe?
No, it it's fine, and I I it just like, I again, you know, Dr. McCarthy was talking about a lot of what other school committees do and others and other um. Uh, body politics, and it's always been my experience that, in many of them that I've been in front of, not all of them, but many of them. Just put that ministerial task right at the front, get it out of the way. Because it always felt odd, you know, we'd be in these meetings until ten, ten thirty, and then all of a sudden, oh, now we got to approve the minutes. You know, we could have just got, taken that care of at the beginning, but it's it's certainly within your discretion how the the agenda flows, Madam Chair. I was just curious, given that we're looking to economize that time, that's all.
Any other questions about the motion? Six thirty start time with the executive session uh, ahead. Oh, Amy, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank Mary for bringing the motion to the committee, since uh, I think, you know, I brought this to. This was my agenda item at the previous meeting, so I'm in favor of of the compromise six thirty as opposed to seven and. And I often wondered about why the executive sessions were at the end of the meeting. It seemed like punitive. Right into the executive session, you know, so.
Yeah. Oftentimes, we also have lawyers kind of waiting, and that's charge time. So Karen, go ahead.
I just have a question. So if we move executive session to the beginning, and we say we have half an hour for executive session, but we don't. Finish, what happens? Just as somebody, someone new, what happens to those pieces that we are discussing? Do they just continue to the next meeting?
So sometimes things in executive session do need action, and so we would have to, in those cases, remain in an executive session until we accomplish that stated goal.
Okay, so I know somebody mentioned that, so you just, you just continue and then start the meeting late. It's not that we then decide we have to meet again. To continue the session, we just continue it and then start the regular meeting.
Right, and then there are other matters in executive session that, you know, maybe we belabor points for a long time, because, you know, nobody's waiting on us.
Yeah.
Might make things more expedient. Any other comments, questions, before I put it to a vote? Okay, Dr. McCarthy, uh, would you read the mo- one more time?
Me. Uh, let me see, I have so many motions here. Um, I got it, though. I move, no, yes, I move that regular NRSD school committee meetings begin at six thirty PM. And that whenever possible, executive sessions and professional development be scheduled from six to six thirty PM.
Second.
Yeah, I think, did Amy set, did somebody else second? Yeah, I think, did Amy se- did somebody else second that last time?
Rich did.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Rich, for doing that again. All right. So Dr. McCarthy, your vote?
Yes.
I am yes. Ms. Pock?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Eckel?
Yes.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
And Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Unanimous. Uh, my assumption is that is effective immediately.
Right.
Okay. Note, two selves. Okay, guys, next item. Cruising right along here would be the consent agenda. And I think, Mike, can I toss it to you? For a motion?
Yeah, sure. Uh, I move to approve the consent agenda for October sixth, two thousand twenty-one, containing the meeting minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, and the warrants of October eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Um, any discussion? Okay, yeah.
I, I hate to, I hate to have a comment on something in a consent agenda, but I, I noticed that the minutes um, for September second talked about me reclusing myself instead of recusing myself from a vote. So, um, yeah, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention.
No, it's okay if Alita just removes that L. Is that right? Without having to pull these apart?
I hope so.
Joe?
Typically, you can typically just, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
No, yeah, Rich, I mean, if you want to go ahead and, and weigh in, you know, I guess.
Go ahead, Rich.
I was just gonna say, you can just say, you can, we can vote on them as amended.
That's absolutely correct. The, the approval of the minutes as amended by Ms. Cohen.
Thank you very much. So approval of the minutes as amended by Ms. Cohen. And any other comments? All right. So we can take the vote on the consent agenda. Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Eckel?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy? Cohen?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Pock?
Yes.
And Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
And did I get you, Steve?
No.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Sorry, my Zoom was just being around. All right, guys, very good. Consent agenda is in the whole. Thank you very much. So we're going to do some subcommittee reports. Our subcommittees are just getting up and running. And they are, um, fantastic subcommittees. So Budget and Warrant, why don't you start us off? Do you have a report?
Uh, we met earlier, uh, in September. We elected a Chair. Unfortunately, I lost and became the Chair. And, um, yeah, it was two to one against me. So I, I don't know what to say, what to say about that. And, uh, Rich Eckel was, uh, elected our Secretary. And we will have our next meeting on the eighteenth, where we will look at our, uh, what you've asked us to look for and, uh, have it ready for you on the nineteenth, on the twentieth.
Great, thanks, Steve. Uh, Personnel, uh, Mary and I are Personnel Subcommittee. I was, um, chosen as Chair and Mary is going to serve as Secretary, AKA workhorse of the committee. And, um, you guys know that we are kind of fast at work with Kirk right now, trying to get his um, goals established. He is going to present those to you in early November. Um, with a little bit of professional development from my trusty subcommittee member, Mary McCarthy. Um, she'll give us a little bit of professional development over goal setting and kind of the evaluation system as a whole, kind of twenty thousand foot view. We're going to be hammering all of that out to bring those to you in early November. Policy.
Hi. So yes, uh, Policy met on the twenty-second of September. Uh, I was, um, elected as Chair and Sean is the Secretary and Leah is helping us out for now. Thank you, Leah. Uh, so we reviewed the goal and tried to work on the language of that piece. And we will be meeting again after this meeting to talk about the key action steps, um, for that goal.
And Communication Subcommittee?
Yes, we met on September twenty-ninth to review the purview and purpose of our subcommittee. Um, and work on a goal. Um, we had some debate about how much detail should be in our goal, although we did review it for the SMART goal attributes, but now it seems like we should revisit it and add some more detail into it. So it's apparent to everybody else that it's meeting the SMART goal standard. Um, we also had some discussion, uh, as an agenda item about the need to review communication-related policies. Um, and thought that this might be something that we ask whether policies would like to take up because it seemed more of a policy issue than a communications subcommittee issue. And I can, um, the context of this was an email received from a parent asking the school committee to look at communication-related policies. And as we began to discuss it, we thought this sounds like something for policy. So, um, so we're handing it off to you. Um, and we have another meeting. Oh, go ahead.
Just really quickly, um, if you could shoot your fellow Chair, Karen, a, um, email on anything specific that you wanted Policy to take up, if, if there was a specific.
Sure. Yeah, I'll follow up with, um, Ms. Devine offline. And, uh, the, the last thing we did was plan another meeting for, oh, we also talked about our collaboration with the um, CEO Subcommittee of the Building Subcommittee. And how we could support each other. And one thing that came out of that discussion was, um, the need for a website. Um, uh, an improved website for the building project, the school build, the high school building project. Um, and we even voted on a recommendation to bring to the school committee related to this, but it turns out we don't need that because our superintendent is already going to provide us with a Google site that my, the, um, building committee can develop. So we are planning to meet again on October twenty-seventh and um, talk more about how we can collaborate with the superintendent on the district communication plan.
Thanks, Amy. And over to our School Building Committee Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I will try and be as succinct as possible, but there is some important information that I need to, uh, provide to the committee tonight. Uh, so regards to the Building Committee, we had our third meeting in as many weeks on the twenty-eighth of September. Uh, the purpose of our meeting on September twenty-eighth was a discussion regarding our request for designer services, which will be published on the thirteenth of this month. And the discussion, uh, was relative to, uh, whether or not this committee, whether the Building Committee would be including in that request for services, a some certain for designer services. Uh, I want to credit Ms. Maroney. She brought us some very interesting information regarding other projects or like-kind projects in the area and has made some recommendations as our Chief Local Community Officer as to what we should be possibly paying for the, um, designer services. Now, first and foremost, the committee did vote to approve a some certain for the, um, for the designer services. And the amount that the committee had, uh, has agreed to is eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, for those of you on this committee who are not part of the Building Committee, I'll tell you how we rearranged that number. Ms. Maroney had done some calculations in regards to looking at estimated construction costs. And that generally speaking, the design fee is a percentage of the actual overall cost attendant to the build. So what she did was she created a range of costs attendant to this matter and then used a different, varying range of percentages ranging from slightly more than a half a percent to, um, one point zero two percent. And she looked at the lower range of these estimated costs, the higher ranges of estimated costs, and, uh, basically recommended a fee of eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, as our, uh, some certain for our request for services. There was some division of opinion on the Building Committee, whether or not that number should be that high. Uh, some had felt that it should be as low as eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. But ultimately, the committee did vote to approve that number right in the middle of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Our next meeting is scheduled for the, um, nineteenth of October. And that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Audit Advisory.
No report.
Very good. Um, all right, guys, so, uh, items for next agenda. I'm going to, um, share the planning calendar, just in case you don't have it handy. So we're looking here. Lo and behold, we do have need for an executive session. And so we will not be asking you to show up later. You can still show up at six. But that first item will be executive session. Hey, Joe, can I ask you a quick question? Um, we still need to open in, do we need to open the meeting in regular session or can we begin in executive?
You absolutely have to open in, uh, an open session because there's a motion that comes before the body to go into executive session. And uh, I think as we had discussed in the past, that motion generally is perfunctory, but there are occasions where there could be debate and deliberation on whether we go in. So yes, we have to open an open session, then go into executive session.
All right. So for Nikki's purposes, Nikki, we will still need you here at six to, uh, be with us to film that very brief moment of opening the meeting. Um, so you can see here, there are a few other things that are kind of on the horizon there. I know that sometimes when I meet with Kirk to set up the agenda on Wednesday afternoons, some things kind of get pushed around a little bit, but here's what we think is going to be there. Is there anybody who would like to make note? Just raise your hand and keep it up. I'm scrolling. Anything else you want added? See none? Or you want?
Sorry, my hand was up. I just didn't say anything. I thought you caught it.
Oh, your, your camera's off.
Oh, my gosh. That's why you can't see my hand. I'm sorry.
Sorry, my, go ahead.
I had to say hello to my son. Um, just as a follow-up to, uh, an agenda item from earlier in this meeting, do we need to vote on our, uh, subcommittee goals?
Yes. And I think that, um, I made mention that it would be at the November meeting, just to make sure that we give everybody some time. Um, and maybe it would be appropriate at that same time to do the protocols. What do you guys think? So if you feel okay to push that up as well, or would you rather do earlier, Amy?
No, I was just going to point out that there, maybe this is, um, obvious or maybe you already know this, but they're already listed on the agenda for, um, October sixth.
Right here. Right.
Uh, up on the second bullet says school committee protocols.
Yeah, but that's tonight, so then we need to push it. See? Well, that's all right. We're here for each other. Anything else that you guys, uh, need or would like to see? As always, um, if it doesn't come to you right now, of course, reach out to me later and let me know. All right, seeing none. I think that we are now on to our very last item, and that is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. And I'll take the vote noting that we are only two minutes over schedule. Uh, fantastic. Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Pock?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Eckel?
Yes.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Horish?
Yes.
And Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
You are a fine bunch. I will see you next time.